You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
All right, I'll call the meeting to work.
Yeah, they're going.
Aye, aye, aye.
Swansea, so it's at the 10th agenda?
Second. She made the second in, all the favorites say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any public input, not preparing to the candidate's side upstairs? See you on that.
Hi, Michael Walter, Real Trails. The last meeting we talked about the tap treatment, the fix to wash outs along the Shree Lot Trail between two older gray houses. Mike Brandy was managing that project and now he's departed. I'm asking whether there'd be an issue if I managed that or if I'm going forward with somebody, whoever did some of the downs. Just kind of keep on top of it, work the DOT, all that kind of stuff.
What's involved in?
I think it's keeping on top of the DOT with foil and tan, or is there the engineering firm, all the funding, making sure things are moving along, you know, that's like, you just want to make sure it keeps moving along.
I think, I feel more comfortable waiting until next Monday or looking back to Alex, or your county minister, because I don't know where.
Okay.
I'm sure Mike will probably put somebody in charge of it. Okay, Stephon, or maybe Adam. Okay, just give us a week.
Okay. I'll get back to you.
We'll see you at the polls.
Okay.
All right, would you have opportunity to stop in Monday?
If it's early, I'm actually on a plane Tuesday morning. I'm gone from home.
Next email.
So it could also deal with when I get back, I'll be back on the 4/7 or through email.
But on Monday?
Monday, probably before noon, 2:00 if that's possible, yeah, I can do that.
Do you just call in, he answers the phone?
Okay.
Same as Michael's extension.
Okay.
So you can just check with him, we can email and find out.
All right, so you make him aware of what I'm proposing and then I'll just talk to him about it and go work it out.
Okay.
Very great, thanks for giving me a couple minutes.
Thank you, Mike. Station two, we've got anything on that? We can put it into our packet. Joe, so this was when we did the retaining wall in 2024. There's a safety fence and there's the existing safety fence that runs from the corner of a building about a third of the way along the retaining wall and as it drops off, there is no, there is no fence. So he had a quote, we thought we might have him writing today, but he don't.
Thirty-seven.
About $3,700 and just wants to take it out of the fire station society's funding. And he recommended that. And you don't want to associate with that, you know, or we can get the book or whatever. But I think I'll have to, I'll have to pull down.
Make that motion. I do pull down, I'm going to stand up.
Second. Who's coming up? The fire station. I'm sorry, it's Joe. She made the second in, all the favorites say aye.
Aye.
And that was, that was communicated to Joe and Eric. It's VJ. Good evening.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the selectmen for allowing us to have this ceremony here. Also like to thank all the family and friends that are here today and for their support of their loved ones. It's a difficult job. Without your support, it can't be done. So it's very appreciated. Thank you. So I do my annual review in January. I review what transpired within the previous year. And when I did my evaluation and review for January, I noticed that there were two significant events that occurred. These events could have resulted in death. We're very fortunate that they did and it's because of the work that these officers did. So I had two group presentations. The first group presentation will be Sergeant Paxton and Officer Collins. Don't kill anybody. So these two events occurred basically within three days of one another, which was a tough week for us, but it worked out well. So. On September 11th, 2024, Sergeant Nicholas Patwin and Officer Jonathan Collins responded to South Road in Swansea for a report of a disturbance. At the second floor of residence, upon their arrival, they were met by an adult male who unknown to them was having a mental crisis. This disturbed male was holding a gun and pointed it at the officers. As Sergeant Patwin and Officer Collins retreated to safety and requested further assistance. Multiple agencies responded to Sergeant Patwin and Officer Collins overseeing evacuation of the first floor of residence to safety and security of the immediate area. It was concerned to the safety of roommate on second floor. Sergeant Patwin and Officer Collins started communications with the male having a mental crisis, hoping he would cooperate. The Grand State Police Squad responded and assisted in getting the roommate out of the residence. Male having a mental crisis was subdued and transported to the hospital. Sergeant Patwin is awarded the police chief citation for demonstrating exceptional courage and selfishness in the face of extreme danger, putting their own life at risk to save others during a critical situation, thereby exemplifying the highest standards of bravery and commitment. Sergeant Patwin's courageous leadership actions demonstrated a high level of professionalism reflects positively upon himself, the Swansea Police Department, and the professional law enforcement. Given on this day, March 4th, 2025, Joseph Gonzalez, Colonel Chief of Police. Officer Collins is awarded the police chief citation for demonstrating exceptional courage and selfishness in the face of extreme danger, putting their life, own life, at risk to save others during a critical situation, thereby exemplifying the highest standards of bravery and commitment. Officer Collins' courageous and quick actions demonstrated a high level of professionalism reflects positively upon himself, the Swansea Police Department, and the professional law enforcement. Given this day, March 4th, 2025, Joseph Gonzalez, Colonel Chief of Police. Thank you, sir. Thank you. So in the second event, officers can stand. So it's September 14th, 2024 at approximately 7:00 PM, Sergeant Kevin Clark, Officer Kyle Titus, and Officer Tabitha Dorezo responded to Summer Street in Swansea for a person with multiple stab wounds. Victim was bleeding heavily from the stab wounds. Officer Titus, first to arrive, immediately performed first aid. Officer Titus retrieved comatotic gas from his police crew and immediately applied pressure to the wounds to slow the bleeding. Officer Titus stayed awake and reassured him until the EMS personnel arrived. Officer Titus immediately, immediately acted directly to save the victim's life. Victim was eventually medevac, to hospital, to treatment, and fully recovered. Officer Titus is awarded the lifesaving award, demonstrating exceptional courage and quick attention by performing lifesaving actions in critical situations, directly resulting in the preservation of another person's life. Officer Titus lifesaving actions demonstrate a high level of professionalism and reflects positively upon himself, the Swansea Police Department, and the profession of law enforcement. Given on this day, March 4th, 2025, Joseph Gonzalez, Colonel Chief of Police. Sergeant Clark took courageous, immediate, professional actions to secure the crime scene and to search for the assailant who stabbed the victim multiple times. Sergeant Clark directed Officer Dorezo at the crime scene to assist in clearing the house to preserve evidence. Sergeant Clark also directed other law enforcement officers to pursue the assailant who was quickly taken into custody. Sergeant Clark is awarded police chief citation for demonstrating exceptional courage and selfishness in the face of extreme danger, putting their own life at risk during critical situations, thereby exemplifying the highest standards of bravery and commitment. Sergeant Clark's quick actions and leadership demonstrate a high level of professionalism and reflects positively upon himself, the Swansea Police Department, and the professional law enforcement. Given this day, March 4th, 2025, Joseph Gonzalez, Colonel Chief of Police. Officer Tabitha Dorezo responded to the stabbing incident without hesitation. Officer Dorezo's quick response to an extremely dangerous situation helped preserve the crime scene and locate the assailant. Officer Dorezo helped Sergeant Clark clear the house in search of a dangerous assailant. Officer Dorezo also documented and collected evidence to prosecute the assailant. Officer Dorezo is awarded the police chief citation for demonstrating exceptional courage and selfishness in the face of extreme danger, putting their own life at risk during a critical situation, thereby exemplifying the highest standards of bravery and commitment. Officer Dorezo's courageous and quick actions demonstrated a high level of professionalism and reflects positively upon himself, the Swansea Police Department, and the profession of law enforcement. Given this day, March 4th, 2025, Joseph B. Gonzalez, Colonel Chief of Police. Thank you. Please join us in the round. And yes, we're fresh in this area, so please don't leave without getting some. Thank you, chief. Thank you, sir.
Okay, we're gonna go in the other room and do a round public or two. Thank you all for coming. Enjoy your lunch, Joe.
Congratulations, everybody. Congratulations, good job, everybody. Good job. Tabitha, good job.
Here in Swansea and was founded in 1992 and basically the purpose of the organization is to foster appreciation of history and heritage of the town of Swansea. And in addition, the Preservation Society provides education opportunities, initiates and participates in various preservation projects, all of which benefit the town of Swansea in keeping heritage alive. So we'd like to begin the night, tonight, by drawing your attention to Joanne Mead, who will be singing "God Bless America" for us.
God bless America, land, land I own, and beside her and neither. Through the night, it's a delight from above, from the mountains to the cravies, to the oceans white with foam. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home.
Ladies and gentlemen, for the remain standing while the Scouts of America Color Guard Troop 18 presents the colors for the pledge of allegiance.
May y'all please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the format for tonight, tonight's event is not a traditional candidates debate and it does not follow a debate format. Seated at the table are candidates running for six different races and also four people running for other positions, including trustee of the libraries and trustee of the trust funds. We're gonna introduce everybody at this time. I thought Joanne was in there, yeah. Okay, if we could just start to my left and introduce yourself and we'll go around the table.
Hi, my name is Mike York, running for Selectman. I've been a town resident for, since I was born, about 1952, except for the 10 years I served as a US Marine. Have two college degrees and a lot of experience with the town on the planning board and attended most of the Selectman meetings, so I have a good understanding of what's going on.
I'm Scott Elf, running for your representative on the planning board and no college degrees, just been on the board.
Good evening, I'm Richard Lane, running on the planning board. Grew up in Swansea, left for a while and back and wanted to volunteer and try and help the town maintain its character.
Mark Lebel, grew up in Swansea, lived here all my life, except for times in the Air Force. Was a police officer for 27 years in town, recently retired, and now I'm a bail commissioner for the Tresor County.
I'm Jay Ward, I'm a candidate for the zoning board where I've been an alternate and a full member for the last several years. I'm also on the Conservation Commission and also the chair of the Fire Station Advisory Committee this year.
I'd like to also invite Richard to come up with, if you want, sit next to Mr. Lane and introduce yourself and what you're running for or from.
My name is Richard Sturley. I've been a resident of Swansea for 52 years and served various committees in the last 12 years as a trustee of the 12th. Why I'm in Columbia, the government, the state, or myself, in the Jack, except that means I'm in the U.S. But I have areas in the service of my authority, sort of chair of planning, excuse me, of the management commission, the 2000, sort of lending, and the rest of the area. And then the, I think, the acting in the desk, and the, I'm just saying, I think, the proper, excuse me, the, 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 the.
Okay, the only rules for tonight, we have some prepared questions. The first portion of the night will be asking the candidates about these prepared questions. We ask that you allow the candidates to all participate and speak, keep your answers concise and to the point, encourage, you know, congenial atmosphere, no personal comments or criticisms. The third and final portion of the night will be for the audience to have the opportunity to get up and ask questions and we'll try to get to that as quickly as possible. That's a great idea, so if somebody speaks, at least in the first few questions, if you could just state your name. Thank you. All right, if you would, for the Selectman's candidates, would you tell us, tell the audience, give a brief description of your background and qualifications and tell us why you're running for the position? You told us a little bit about your past, but you know, why do you, why do you want to be a Selectman?
Hi, Mike York. I believe that my 30-plus years as a manufacturing manager, a bachelor's degree in business, and an MBA, which is a master's of business administration, I've actually supervised up to 250 to 300 people in a production plant with multiple divisions within the plant. I've developed pet budgets, implemented them, and followed them. And in the business world, you have to stay within your budget, you just cannot go out of it. I've also been on the planning board for the last nine years and I have a good handle on land use and what we actually can do and can't do. And I'm concerned because I actually go to Concord to testify on those bills I feel will hurt Swansea or help Swansea in some cases. One that's just passed and going into the full Senate to vote today is of major concern to me and it should be to everybody in Swansea. It's SB 399, it come out of committee. And what it is, it's a committee to study whether zoning amendments will be the responsibility in, for the state and taking it away from the local control of the towns. That means you people, as the citizens of the town, will no longer have a voice in what zoning amendments you have for the town of Swansea.
Thanks, Mike.
Mark Lebel, I just want to continue to give to the town. I've spent 27 years as a police officer, 35 years as a firefighter. I believe in accountability, I think that people need to be able to do their job effectively and that it needs to, if you're assigned a job, you should be able to do it well, not assign another job. From what I've seen over the last few years, people in town are assigned a certain job and then they're given other tasks and they can't do that main job correctly if they're doing other tasks that aren't their main job. And I just feel that I go on and continue to give to my community, I think I can help.
If elected, what are your top three priorities and how will you use your background and experience to influence the community to achieve those goals? What are your top three?
Top three would be, first of all, make sure that our budget stays in line. I went through the budget this year pretty close and I think the Select Board this year did a very good job holding it to only a 5% increase because we all know that the inflation rate this year was not 3% like the government tries to tell us, it was more like 15 to 20 when you take into account fuel and food, which the government does not take those into account. That's my top priority. In other words, the growth of Swansea, the way we want it to grow, the way the people of Swansea want it to grow. Back in 2019, we did a upgrade of the master plant and we had Southwest do it with us. We had 400 responses on a survey that we did. So the planning board at that point was trying to grow the town and do amendments to grow the town. In other words, the people wanted a rural character, which I agree with, and we wanted our commercial to stay on Route 10, Route 12, and grow down through those corridors. And that would be a priority for me also. And a third one? I believe a third one is just to make sure that we grow as a town. The fire station is a priority, the water over here is a priority. We need to get those passed and we need to implement those.
I agree with Mark Lebel, I agree with Mike as far as the budget, I think we need to work within our budget. There, there needs to be cost cutting. We need to look at the budget to make sure we're getting the bang for our dollar. That would be my number one priority. Number two is, I agree with the rural character as far as within the villages, absolutely the 12, 10, and even north on 32 where there's not so much housing anymore, we need to develop them. Right now, people are having a tough time affording their taxes because we have housing, although all these apartments, I don't know where the jobs are, we need to have jobs in order to fill those apartments to offset the taxes. And I think the last thing, my number priority would be to both the fire department and the police department, we need to find a way to man them. There's sector shortages, the police department has, I think, five full timers right now and they're authorized 12. And the fire department is very, very small. And I don't really know how we're gonna do it, but we gotta find a way.
So with that in mind, what do you believe is the most critical issue facing the town right now?
Keeping our finances in order is the most critical thing and growing the town. If we do nothing, I know there are people that say we should not grow anything in town, we should stay the same. What happens then is called the present value of a dollar or inflation. If you stay flat, your taxes are gonna definitely go up. So we need to, we need to prioritize getting that water online so that we can grow Route 10. There's lots done, if we can get commercial in there, that will help the tax base. And I, the, got to find a way to have the state stop mandating the local control, the local aid. Because right now, our budget is at 280,000. That's 3.4% of our budget. That's a concern, but we don't have a choice because the state says you will, persons in your town, you will take care of them, you will pay all those bills.
Yeah, I agree, we need to, we need to somehow grow business in town. You know, again, on the outskirts, I think the water is very important. I'll admit, when I first saw the price tag, I was sticker shocked, but then when you listen to the actual presentation, I suggest that everybody actually read up on that, that we're crazy if we don't do it. It would hopefully, again, bring business in. And as far as the welfare assistance that we have to give, absolutely, we can't, right now, we can't say no. I know when I was at a Select Board meeting a few months ago and a woman asked, what happens when we run out of money? And Bill Hotwoker brightly said, we can't, we can't run out of money, the state won't allow us to. And so even if we go over that 280,000, somehow we have to find the money to pay for it regardless, and there's gotta be a way to get that under control.
While you're there, I'll stick with you for a second. Can the town currently absorb, can the services for the town absorb the growth that's happening right now? Do you feel like what we have for infrastructure, services, can absorb what's happening as far as the growth and development that's already on the books or shovel ready, if you will?
Are you talking about like personnel wise?
Fire, police?
No, I think we need more personnel on both. I mean, when you only have five police officers for a town this big, you know, I think the last was like 7,700. And back when I first started in 1998, if you go by FBI statistics, we should have 16 police officers. I'd be happy if we had 12 back again. And obviously, the fire department, I mean, in Norm, you just went, I mean, you had full crews to go, but how many people were left for Swansea when we went to Winchester the other day? Unfortunately, there's just not that many members on the fire department, we gotta find a way to build that back up.
Yeah, I agree, the police department, it's an issue that's stationed wide right now and it's a making of our own in a way that we've demonized police officers. And Mike can probably speak to that even more because he's been on quite a while. So the young people don't want to do it anymore. First of all, we did make one step to try to track people, we have a bonus system after they stay so long. Hopefully, we have a contract that says you gotta spend at least five years if we train you. We did a short pay raise, you know, we raised the pay a little bit, but it's very difficult because not everybody can be a police officer. It takes a special person to be a police officer. So you can't just hire anybody that comes in. Okay? And I know the chief is working very hard on it, he's had some recent interviews and we're trying to build the force back up. The other issue is that even when we get them, they spend two or three years, Manchester's hiring, Concord's hiring, they can offer more promotions further up the ladder. Everybody wants to move up in their career. They can offer more advancement, they can offer more money. Okay? And the fire department, we're still a call volunteer fire department at this point. And yes, we're trying to, and we need to, get more people involved. One of the big reasons I see is when I was young, Kingsbury and the mill over here were active and they allowed people to leave their jobs to go fight a fire. Companies no longer allow that. So that's a difficulty right there.
I'm gonna open up this question basically to anybody at the table. Swansea's known for its rural character and that was, you know, a promotion that the town had several years ago, spoke a lot about, however, there's been a significant amount of commercial and residential growth in the last recent years. In your opinion, does the rapid growth and development impact the town's rural character or what impact the identity of the town? or what impact the identity of the town, do you feel?
I don't think it's important.
Is it important? Somebody said to me the other day, what's rural character?
I think it's important, like, because everybody likes the small New England villages and communities, and I think that's important. But like I said earlier, I think the corridors 12 and 10, and then even north of 32, where there's, there's not those historic homes anymore. They're all been torn down on 32 because of the airport. Those were torn down thirty years ago. So as much as I would like it to stay that way across town, I don't think we can afford it. Housing isn't going to be able to pay the taxes and support the services that the town reserves.
Yeah, I agree with Mike, Mike, absolutely. We, you know, housing does not pay the bills, okay? Commercial business pays the bills. The web building that came in, I know some people didn't like it because it was built in a field. They like to go by and see the field every day. But the thing is, there was a company that moved in that actually no services, they don't need any services, because all those people already had jobs because that company was in keen. So they didn't have to have services, like putting kids in the school. But if we stay flat, we have no growth at all, which, you know, we can't be 1955 and 1960 anymore, because if we do that, then your taxes are going to go out of sight, guaranteed, because there's going to be few people, there's going to be no companies, and who's going to pick up the tax? Because you know the school budget's never going to go down. There's always going to be a need for the schools, and the schools are expensive to run. And so we need the growth, 10, 12, somewhat in 32, except for around the center here, which is more hysterical, I think. We keep that the way it is and try to do something with the grange. But yeah, we need to grow. Unfortunately, we're not going to be the little old town of New Hampshire anymore. We're going to have to grow down our corridors if we want to be able to live here.
Others?
Well, we keep the rural part mainly due to zoning. That's how we do it. That's how it's done in the town. We vote, we all vote on zoning, and the planning board is charged with coming up with the voting, and voting that the townspeople vote on. But yeah, it all depends on where you put your development. If you're putting it in a rural area, then yeah, you're destroying the rural character of that area. But we've been trying to keep it consolidated too. These guys are talking about Route 10, Route 12, and possibly 32. Commercial-wise, it's probably going to go there anyway, even multifamily-wise, just because multifamily needs water, and they need sewer, and commercial needs water. They don't necessarily need the sewer, but they need the water. Another reason why the water company on Route 10 is so important. So if that goes through, then it's another step to keep the commercial development out of the rural areas onto Route 10, where it should be. So yeah, it's all through zoning, and it's through planning.
Richard Lane. My thoughts on this is I am not opposed to industry or business, but I would like to see a little more interaction between the applicant and the town as to incorporating as much of the character into their buildings. And I just, sometimes we find ourselves in a position where we're being dictated to as to what we can put in and where. Again, I would like, one of the things I would like to see is sort of like a roundtable of townspeople in that particular area where this applicant is thinking of putting in their business, and getting the opinions from the town or these people, and trying, working with them to incorporate their feelings and what they would like to see into their design of their building, rather than coming in and saying, this is what we're going to do, and the zoning says, yes, we can do this. But have a little more compassion as to what they're coming into and what they're looking at as far as the town is, and what its character is. I may be a little bit old-fashioned. I've been, I've been in Swansea since I was four years old, and that was back in nineteen forty-four, fifty, no, forty-four, excuse me. So it's, it's just something I would like to see more of.
But again, that would be advisory, because under the zoning ordinances in town, you know, it's zoning takes care of that. The ordinance itself and the site plan regulations take care of all those types of things, like the type of building you need to put up. And there's also private property rights. You know, somebody owns a piece of property, they have the right to put up whatever is allowed in the zone. And it would be nice, I'm agreeing with you, that to fit it into the area, but again, the planning board could and should only be able to go so far as designating what a person has to put up on the property, what it's got to look like. Certain extent, certain extent, the planning board does do that with, you know, roof styles as we've done down here and other types of styling, but it can and should only go so far, in my opinion, just because of private property rights.
Can everybody hear okay? Everybody hearing okay? Jay, do you have?
Just wanted to add that from the zoning perspective, the, we, of course, work to make sure the zoning ordinances are enforced or not, or adhered to by applicants as they come before us. Usually, they're asking for an exception to what the zoning board is, either through a special exception or a variance. And we don't want to just give a special exception because somebody wants it, or a variance because somebody wants it. We want to obey the will of the voters, which is what the zoning ordinance is. It's the will of the voters voted in. And the, so we work with, with the applicant to help them understand what they can and can't do, as the planning office does in the town hall. I like what Richard's talking about in principle. It's just very difficult to enact that unless you change the site plan regulations themselves to, to talk about what kinds of styles can be in a particular neighborhood and so on. And in terms of zoning ordinance, we have a fairly extensive sign ordinance, which limits the size and shape of signs, and we can go even further there if we want to make sure that that area of development doesn't intrude on the rural character. But I also want to see us, as a town, put some effort into maintaining and improving our recreational areas as well. That, that's part of the rural character of town, the ability to take a hike on Mount Caesar or Mount Crescent or, or other places in town, or to, or to go to some of the town-owned lands where one can enjoy nature. So all of that needs to be in a constant tweaking of the zoning ordinance, and we need to keep looking at that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Just so you folks know, the town report is out. It's in the back of the room if anyone wants to grab a copy. And the ballot is back there as well. We're going to move into the warrant articles now and try and get through them quickly, but they're all pretty important this year. Article two identifies ten amendments to the town of Swansea zoning ordinance, and some of the proposed amendments appear to be housekeeping in nature, and some are more complicated than that. In addition to the, those changes that are, that are being proposed, they have to do with permitted uses in conservation districts. One amendment deals with wildlife habitat development in conservation areas. One identifies exceptions currently functioning and maintained manufactured features in wetlands. And without going over each amendment specifically, can you folks give us an idea of what the intent of these amendments are, and, you know, how, how we should approach these? There's a lot of them that'll be on the ballot. Maybe the zoning and planning.
Well, the planning board approves, approve what's on the warrant with one exception, so maybe the planning board member should speak to that.
Yeah, it's the planning board's job to go over and pull the public hearings on any zoning amendments for the town, and the town voters vote on at town meeting. And yeah, the first, I don't know the specific numbers there, but...
First, one through seven.
Is it through seven? Yeah, are pretty much housekeeping. They have to do with, with what's allowed in different zones, and we had different wording for different types of businesses, which meant the same thing. So we're just consolidating it down to the, to the same phrase, the same word for all of those areas there that had to do with allowable uses. The rest of them are, I think they're the wetlands ones. And personally, I was against all of them. I still am against all of them. They are too much of a private property taking for the town, and they weren't thought out well enough, in my opinion. The, you know, Conservation Commission should have taken more time to, to look at those over and talk about them. So again, we aren't ready for some of those zoning ordinances, or the rest of the zoning ordinances really, the wetlands one. So basically, if you want...
So eight, nine, and ten, you're not in favor of, but one through seven are housekeeping?
Yeah, eight, nine, and ten, need more work, in my opinion.
And if, I urge people to read Sherry Domena, the chair of the Conservation Commission's post on the Swansea community page, which she basically says what Scott says, that eight, nine, and ten are not fully, fully realized, and she's actually saying that we, we don't, as a Conservation Commission, we don't support those right now. We are working on a better ordinance for next year.
Yeah, as a planning board member, I agree with Scott, and we had some long discussions about it, because right now, they, what they would have to do is get a variance across the wetlands. That's better handled at the planning board as a conditional use, so we can make sure that this little interruption on the wetlands takes place, because we do need to protect the wetlands, but we also need to protect people's private property rights, where they have a right to build on their property. And in New Hampshire, you're supposed to, there's not supposed to be landlocked land where you can't get to it. And some, and these ordinances would, in some instances, require a variance if they want to cross those wetlands, and a variance is very difficult to get over with, with the CBA, and that's done on purpose, because we just don't want anybody doing that.
Article three is a zoning map change to the existing zoning map of the town, and includes the lots that front Base Hill Road, all of them, and exempts a list that are in the article, that you can read, certain lots are exempted. What's the significance of the change, and do you support the change?
No, we don't support that change for one, it's considered spot zoning. And spot zoning, although it's not really technically illegal, the courts look very badly upon it. Basically, what you're doing is you're taking the three businesses that are already on that and hamstringing them and handcuffing them. They can't do any expansion whatsoever if you pass that. So it could result in lawsuits against the town of Swansea.
So those three businesses would be in one district, and every other property would be in a residence district?
And one of them, they can't expand their business like they want to, and they bought that property as a commercial property to expand.
And I agree. I think that the business is already there, except storage unit company that want to expand it. When they bought the property in the first place, they were under the understanding it was zoned for business, so it, like Mike says, they're kind of hamstringing them if that passes, whether they bought the land for a purpose to expand it, which obviously we already agree, businesses are going to help the town, and not a lot of rural character out on Base Hill Road.
Well, this is the, probably one of the bigger or more important articles, Article four, it's going to be on the ballot, and it has to do with raising and appropriating three million five hundred thousand for the purpose of preparing plans and specifications in constructing and equipping and furnishing a new fire station at town-owned property located at 321 Old Homestead Highway. And it's, there's a variety of funding mechanisms in the article, so that the bond is actually, the amount to be raised by the bond is two million?
Two million five.
Two point five.
So this is, in the media you hear, this is the seventh year, you know, try for the fire station. You know, this current fire station is located in the basement of the town hall in Swansea Center. It's been there since early 1960s, and the fire department has outgrown it, the town hall has outgrown it, and there are a number of issues with the building. I think Jake was the chair, actually, raise your hand if you sat on that committee. Okay, so we've got four people that sat on the committee. Anyone else out in the audience? You might want to just give us, like, a snapshot of what the committee did. I know you met since, like, last summer, and you came to a conclusion, brought to the selectmen.
The selectmen asked us to, to come up with a solution to this problem, because the town has voted in the majority to build this fire station, but not insufficient numbers to authorize a bond. So we looked at the situation and tried to do what was necessary to produce a modern station, which would replace the station, which is not, it doesn't meet the needs of modern firefighting, for a reasonable cost. And that led us to continue to put it at the same location as previous proposals had on Old Homestead Highway, but it also made us change the way it was constructed and the design that had been produced before. And all of that was able, we were able to shave almost two million dollars off the, off the costs that had been proposed before last year. And we did this through looking at everything from the very beginning, looking at where we might put the building, what we needed in the building. We went and visited others, another station, the building Westmoreland, and we eventually worked our way to what you see here. And along the way, we found this, this would save money, this would save money, but we had, had several firefighters on the committee, and we always worked to give them what they needed. And so what we've got is a station which does the job for a lot less money than what has been proposed before, and we think it's, it will last for a good long while and anchor the fire department in Swansea. Won't be the, the only station, obviously, but it will be a station we will not have to worry about anymore. And we hope that it will help attract firefighters to work in the department. We hope that people will be well-served by this particular station, and we really hope that people will vote for it. The money, the two-and-a-half million, is going to be financed through a bond, and the town office told us that the bond service for this is essentially the same amount of money that we've been paying the last three years for, to put in the capital reserve for the fire station. So taxes are not likely to go up over last year, but they would, we'd be continuing to pay this one-hundred-and-fifty, one-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars a year as a town toward, toward servicing the bond. It's, the majority of people in the town have wanted the fire station. We're hoping that by making a more reasonably-sized building, a better design, a little bit cheaper construction materials, that we can get over that last four or five percent of the town voters and get this building built.
Because you need a three-fifths vote to get the bond.
We need a sixty percent vote. We had about fifty-five percent, something, last year.
And one-hundred-and-fifty thousand would be coming out of general taxation, two-hundred thousand from grants that have already been secured and are just parked right now. We're still able to get those grants, and some money from the undesignated fund balance, which about is about one-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
And money for our fire station capital reserve count.
So I'm... Mark. You've spent thirty-five years on the fire.
Yeah, I'm really happy with the committee, that I love the design. We kind of switched the whole building, turned it facing Route 32. I'll, I'll be honest, I'm still not sold on my location, but I understood why we, they, the committee picked that location was because it was the only location that we could do this year. So I get that. Like I said, I'm still not sold on the location, the distance. You know, I think, in my own personal opinion, during the daytime, fire departments occupied, it's not going to be that big a deal for them response time. The big deal will be at nighttime, in the middle of January, and there's a fire in West Swansea, and all the members from Swansea Center that are in the middle of town have to go all the way, and again, it's only a mile or so, but as you know, fires double in size every thirty seconds. By the time they get their windfields and everything covered, to get back up there, to get back over to the other side of the town, I'm just concerned that that's going to be an issue.
Mike?
I agree with Mike. It's, it's not the best location we could have had, but we lowered, we owned the property already, so it lowered the cost significantly. As it's going to be less grading that has to be done there than, say, the Port Ash Bowl where we looked at a little bit. That centrally located is probably better, but it's, it's, and we do own it, but the problem is, landscaping there would be very expensive, because it slopes up very quickly. So I think, I like, I like the design of the fire station. I think it's basically functional with the ability to expand if we ever need to do in the future. And in conversations, a lot with the chief, the people in town that say they don't want it, because we want to do a full time fire department. it, because we want to do a full time department, full-time fire department, that's not on the cards now. Right now, we need to get the fire station in there, and I have not heard anybody say that once we build it, we're going to put a full-time fire department in there right away. We're not going to do that right away. Will we in fifteen, twenty years? I don't know, I may not be around, none of us may be around. You know, if the town grows, then it may come to that someday, but not right now. But I do like the design, the cost is where we can afford it, so time is to do it, is now.
I'll just add that we will have another open house this Saturday from eleven to two at, at the Station Number Two under the Town Hall. Anybody who wants to come to see why we have to replace the building, come look at the building we have. And if you want to see the plans up close, they're also posted here in the building.
And the open houses have been pretty well attended, though you had, like, four so far.
We've had three so far, fairly well attended, but we could use more people.
Yeah. Scott, you were on the committee, too?
Yeah, I was, and, and it wasn't a typical committee, in, in the sense that, how they usually work. Usually, you got a committee like that, and they'll sit down and get an engineer in there, an architect in there, and the architect will do their thing, engineer as well, and they'll say, yeah, that, that looks pretty good, let's go with that, and somebody will do a bid on it, and they'll get it done that way. That wasn't the case this time, we had a large committee, it was close to twenty people. And we sat down and we decided the main problem was, it just costs too much. And also, another major point we decided on was that it need to be reduced by at least a third to get that cost down, and do some, something on the site that we could bring it down as well, which is what we did, moving the fire station closer, so we didn't have as much site work to do and less paving. And also, the committee members got down and decided, and the deputy chief came up with a design that the fire department liked, and it looked good, we all liked it, and tweaked it a few times at different meetings. And after that, we decided everything was going, and where it should be, and how big it should be and stuff, then is when we decided to contact the architect, and let the architect know that we had a ceiling, we didn't want to go over three point five million, and to start with that, rather than the other way around, them telling us how much it's going to cost and what we're going to do. So, they worked with us on that, and a few back and forths to lower some things here and there, and that's how we got to that, where it is now, the design is now, which is a nice design, and the cost, which is a reasonable cost. So, it was an interesting committee, it wasn't your typical committee.
And the plans are behind us on either side of the stage, if anybody wants to take a look at those. Anybody else on the fire station? Okay, Article five is another important article, which is to see if the town will raise six million four hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing and making improvements to the West Swansea Water Company, including the real property identified in Map One Oh Eight Lot Three. This is also being done with a, some sort of a grant that gives a forty percent discount on the principal, is the way I understand it.
Forgiveness, yeah, forty percent forgiveness on the principal.
So, I think you guys should talk about why it's important to have that, to buy that system, if you think it is, or why you don't think it's important.
Well, there's a couple of good reasons why, okay? One is if we're going to expand commercial in West Swansea and on Route Ten, there's no, there's not water available right now to do that, okay? So, that's one thing. And then the other thing is, I think there's like two hundred people that are hooked up to the present system. Problem with that is, those system is old, the, the pipes and everything underneath are fine, but the pumps are going. They need to be replaced. When are they going to go? While engineers tell us it's, you can't tell, might go tonight, okay? And then everybody, if we didn't have that revamped and, and modernized, then people would have to put your own wells in. Wells cost close to fifteen to twenty thousand dollars now. You've got lots over here in West Swansea, you couldn't drill a well out of it, because first of all, you couldn't get the rig in there, all right? And speaking to the cost, as people have asked me from North Swansea, that are on the North Swansea Water, would they have to help pay for it, or no? Because there's a forty percent unforgivable, unforgivable loan, okay? That means, once we build it, the loan comes in, it's a forgivable loan, what we have to put out, and basically, we'll have to put out a, a few dollars in interest. The balance of that and the maintenance of that is going to be paid for by the rate users. And yes, the rate users over here in West Swansea that are on it, they're going to have, their rates are going to increase, that's, that's true, but they're going to have a stable water system. And also, it's this fire safety thing, where the fire hydrants in West Swansea, a lot of them don't work, because there's no water available for them. So, that's a, that's a fire safety thing along, along with that. So, I think it's very important that we're behind us. Of those people, like myself, that are on our own wells, we don't have to hook up to it, because there's nothing in the plans to say, if you don't want to be hooked up to that system, you don't have to be hooked up to that system. So, I think it's very important for our residents over here in West Swansea to have a stable water system.
And speaking of that water system, I don't agree with you on those pumps there. I know that they're submersible turbine pumps, and they have been in there since probably the sixty-five, sixty-eight, whenever they put them in, but they're pretty good pumps. You know, there are water lubricated bearings in there, and there's very little sediment, if any, that I know of coming up out of those wells. There are eighty feet deep, as far as I know, gravel-packed wells. Each of those two pumps that we're talking about pump three hundred and fifty gallons a minute. And the problem with the company right now is that it's at storage capacity, meaning that they've got a five thousand gallon tank up there, and according to the state, you can only have so many hookups on that amount of storage. So, in order to go any further with the, the system, there has to be more storage capacity. Now, the wells can easily pump enough water for any kind of storage capacity up there. So, that six million dollars isn't just to buy the water company, that six million dollars, if it is that, would be to upgrade the pump house, and to put in a water storage tank, which would be quite costly, and to run water up and down Route Ten, which is what we need there. Now, we're looking at putting the water tank up by viewpoint up there, that's a fairly high spot, it's not as high as Christian Hill, but the hookup would be a lot shorter up to viewpoint, and we'd be able to hook up, we're thinking anyways, the viewpoint customers up there, which would add a hundred or more people onto that system, which would be more ratepayers to help pay for it. That six million dollars came from the reverse of the committee that I was talking about that we were on. The engineers first came up with the six million dollars, and then, you know, it was decided, okay, that's what we're going to need, which we may need that, I don't know, but it doesn't mean that it's going to actually cost that six million dollars in the end to get that system up to snuff. And, let's see, what else there? I was on that committee, the committee for the, or part of the committee anyways. So, yeah, as far as the infrastructure, it's good in the ground, the pipes are good in the ground, they've, they're about five feet deep, and they're all buried in sand anyways, which is probably why there's not been any water breaks here in town. There's a third well that goes along with that, which is not commissioned yet by the state, it's been out of commission, but that's a bigger well, it's a seven hundred and fifty gallon a minute well over in that area, which would probably go with this whole system for future development for the town.
Mark, you know, bringing in the hydrants is going to impact development, too, right?
Correct. I mean... So, I, I support it, I, I think, you know, and I don't want people to think, well, because I, I guess I'm old school, where, especially when I was younger, it was always the three different communities were always separated, and, you know, if West Swansea or some, Swansea Center and East Swansea were pissed off. In this case, I think, if we build it, we should build it, that the tax savings when we get business on Route Ten will offset everybody's taxes, not just in West Swansea. And like you said, it's going to be a per-user cost, and so, it's not going to be a cost to the taxpayers anyways. Getting forty percent forgiven, like I said, initially, I wasn't for it, I was like, six million dollars, you're crazy! And then forty percent off, that gets it down to like four. And like Scott just said, we don't even know if it's even going to be that, but I think it's, it's in the best interest of the town to increase services, fire hydrants. Would be silly not to do it.
And, and I'll just say, remember that adding users is going to reduce the overall cost per user. Also, the forty percent forgiveness, the loan is not going to be there forever, this is the only year I think we can use it, so it, it needs to be acted on this year and not other years. And the other advantage of this, other thing to note about this proposal is there are two other warrant articles which support this, and the, the most important one would be the, the last article on the ballot, I believe, which authorizes the selectman to purchase the property. And for that, they need a larger vote, the, I think, three-quarters of the town voters have to approve that. We need to purchase the water company, and we need to be able to do that in order to make the improvements.
People may, may or may not realize, but buildings that are built on Route Ten, or that exist and want to renovate, or whatever, there are fireflow requirements for them to be able to build their buildings by having the water there. It will attract business, because they won't have to put in expensive cisterns, or, you know, locate to a community that already has a water capability, and that will put Swansea in a position to, you know, offer that service, so they can build those buildings, right?
Correct.
Article six is to, are we good to keep going? We doing all right? Article six is a hundred thousand dollars for doing a comprehensive stormwater planning capital improvement plan. I don't think it's a very controversial thing, but do you candidates support that?
Yeah, I would support it, yes.
Yes. And the planning's good, you know? I mean, that's a complicated plan that, you know, they're just going to require an engineering firm to come in and do that plant. Yep. Okay. And you have anything on, on that?
Nothing on that, you know, just, they're just looking over stormwaters, planning for the future there. It's nothing going to be built, it's just for plans, as far as I know.
Nor what does the warrant say is, is the cost to the taxpayer on that?
It's, it's a hundred thousand dollar warrant article. It authorizes the selectman to participate in a revolving loan fund established for the purpose, so that money is put into an ongoing account, a revolving account. I don't know if there's any grants involved in that or not. Just forgiveness.
That's what I'm saying, there's no, there's no tax...
There's no cost to the taxpayer.
There's no cost to the taxpayer for that.
And Article seven is our operating budget, seven million nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, six ninety-nine is the default number, eight million three seventy is the actual budget number that was approved at the deliberative session. How you guys feel about the budget? Number one, are you in agreement with basic, overall with the budget number that's there? And when, if you're elected, are there particular areas of the operating budget that you would be specifically putting more attention or looking at more closely, or?
I'm in favor of it, I know that at the budget hearing, they asked for the select board to, to cut a percentage, which they did, and I'm, I'm comfortable with the number. I think I'm going to look at, if I'm elected, I'm going to look at everything in the budget. I think that people need to stay within it, and, you know, if you can make cost cutting that doesn't hurt the town, I think you should do it.
Yeah, I, I've got the budget, and I've gone through it, item by item. There is no way to cut anymore, and like Mark said, they came, I think, like eight point nine percent was, was the rise in it, increase, and now they've got it down to five percent. And like I've stated before, your inflation rate this year was not three percent, like the federal government wants to tell you, it was more like fifteen to twenty percent. So, to come in with a budget, in my experience in handling, handling a lot of budgets during my career with, in the industry, this is a very sound, well-thought-out budget. You can't, they can, the select board can only spend what's in here, and there are times that even in the industry world, where you fall short in one area because something happens, like we have a bad winter, we have to use a lot of salt, we run out of money in that account, so where do you get the money? You've got to be flexible enough in the other parts of your, your budget to be able to bring that money into it. The one area that's very, very hard for the town to budget in is for your local assistance, which is mandated by the state, and if you fall short in that budget, it doesn't matter, you're still going to pay that bill. You've got to find the money somewhere. So, I think to cut this budget right now any further would be a detriment to the citizens, and I'd like anybody to find in there where they could actually cut this year. You can't. Or it's going to hurt people.
Okay. Article eight is the capital budget, and, you know, there's a number of projects that are in Article eight for buildings, fire ponds, fire tools, police facility maintenance, police IMS, the computer system, this Wickham Hall, Town Hall, is there anything in there that you supportive of that budget, capital budget?
Well, having that on the capital improvement committee, what we've done is, we tried, we tried to save money in there, so when these things come up, we have the money to pay for them. And we moved some things around this year because of the fire station and, and everything. We moved the fire engine, was supposed to be on the agenda for this year, we moved that back a year, so that the people will have to pull out of their pockets the cost that they have to pay for the fire station and the fire engine at the same time, because fire engines are up around six, seven hundred thousand dollars minimum now. They're very expensive pieces of equipment, so we moved that back. Sometimes we have to move things around, but we looked at that very carefully, and we did, at that time, put in seventy-five thousand matching for the Grange, which got taken out at the deliberative session, but that's what people want, that's what people want. I do support the Grange. I know it's not popular in some circles that aren't here to support it, but I supported, I supported it there, and I'd like to sit down, have them sit down with the selectmen, and really get down to the nitty-gritty and say, okay, what's this committee going to have to raise to take care of that Grange, to get it back up to where it was? And what's going to be the purpose of it? I know a lot of us think that it could be a senior center. Then the town's also looking for office space, that's another use it could be for, is for office space. It is going to cost money to redo it, okay? It's going to cost a lot of money, it's going to be a lot of hard work raising the money to do it. The town does own the building. We already have over a hundred thousand in the, that we put into the roof now to make sure it doesn't leak, but I'm in support of keeping the Grange and fixing it up.
Well, as long as you brought that up, I would just say, so people understand, the Grange Hall located across the street from the Town Hall, built in nineteen sixteen to be a Grange, there is no Grange anymore that's called the Grange Hall. And for thirty-plus years, the Swansea Preservation Society, which is the group that's putting this on tonight, has used the building for a meeting space, as have other groups and other functions. And more recently, because we were trying to get grants for the building, we had expanded programs like Coffee Connections and the Bluegrass Festival. In the back of the room, over on that easel, if you, when you're leaving tonight, there are pictures of the construction that took place this past year. The board of selectmen are in control of the building, it's not a private building, it's actually a town building. And there has been about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of improvements that have gone into the building for critical things like electric, the roof replacement, which thankfully was done this year with the snow load that we had, the roof that was on there probably would have been very questionable. And so, the roof has been replaced, it's been insulated, the hall upstairs has been re-sheet rocked and painted, at least the ceiling, so little projects have been done, and that is the arrangement that the advisory committee has with the selectmen. It was originally a one point two million dollar restoration, and we all decided that that was not going to be possible. So, what I think the selectmen have been trying to do with the advice of their Grange Hall Advisory Committee is to do a little bit each year and fix a few things as we go along. The roof was done first because there was water coming through the building, and that roof was very substandard, it did not have the pounds per square foot for snow load. The, the roof covering had failed, and the structure itself had failed. So, there's no funding this year in this year's budget for the Grange, but I think the advisory committee and even the Preservation Society is fine with that, because there's RFP out right now to paint that building, and the roof was done, so a lot has been done with that building. Some of these other projects are very much warrant the money, too, so, I just, so you're clear on it.
So, I support the Grange, but I think that there ought to be more fundraising, so it doesn't come from tax dollars. Like this building, it started out, the Wickham Hall Committee started raising funds, and I think that would show a lot more to the taxpayers, if the people who support it get out there and do fundraising. I understand you have the Bluegrass Festival, I don't know how you raise money with Coffee with Connection, I don't know, people pay money...
It's a service more than raising.
Yeah, so, so I would rather have, see something where, you know, again, they do the chicken barbecue, I'm sure that doesn't raise a lot of money, but they seek out funds from donations. I would rather see that, at least get a fund started so that we can preserve the building and so it doesn't impact the taxpayers all the time. And if we're going to go for a large amount of money, I think it should be a separate warrant article, so, because, and, you know, it was, I think a lot of taxpayers were caught off guard last year with the $100,000, because they didn't realize that if it got voted down, there are little individual things, like the recreation department, or the fire station, or the fire truck, we're all going to lose. And so I think it would have been better if we had just done a separate warrant article and done it that way.
Okay. Article nine says, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $685,000, which are for six categories of public works: DPW facility, $15,000, road rehab, $400,000, rail trails, $10,000, highway and cemetery equipment, $200,000, sidewalk, $35,000, and town bridges, $25,000.
I have no issue with it, I think that Joe Russell's doing an excellent job spending the money where it needs to be spent.
Yeah, Joe Russell does an excellent job with those, and as you can know, that you want your roads plowed, people want to use the rail trails, that costs it. The Public Works Department is one of the more expensive ones, because as we've seen this year, I haven't talked to Joe recently about how to solve this, but we all know that it's been a very hard year with ice and snow.
Actually, I spoke to Joe two weeks ago, and there's a shortage. He ordered it, and they didn't tell him they didn't have it. So he ordered it, and then he couldn't get it, and he was trying to get it out of Massachusetts at the time.
Yeah.
So that's why the roads are all slippery lately, recently, there's no solve.
I don't want to take up too much time on these, but we should at least touch base with Article 11, is the Tax Increment Finance District for West Swansea, and...
That's an important one, actually.
Yeah, the, okay.
That Tax Increment Finance District, it's proposed for Route 10 corridor, pretty much here, probably from Nick's Restaurant down to...
Creamy Cone?
All the ways, I think almost to Creamy Cone, not as far as Creamy Cone. But anyway, what that means is that if that's voted on by the town, and the town says that that is a go, there's a go on it, any businesses or any improvements to those properties in that district, the amount of monies that, let me explain it, the evaluation on the properties start when the district is done, when it's financed and when it's created. Then any improvements on those properties above that, that part of the tax dollars go to paying down any bonds or any loans that are made to that district for improvement, improvements in that district for, we'll say, the water or sewer or anything like that, the municipal improvements. So just to make the district there, the town can vote on it this year to consolidate it as to where it is, and it can sit there, and then it can be worked on later on, what will go into it and how that will be done, say, the water company being involved with it, and any other building that may, or any other construction that might be out there involved in it. Again, it's to pay down that bond and to pretty much attract industry to our town.
So is that TIP article, how's that related to Article 14 for the construction industrial exemption? Is that connected in any way with that?
Read that again, the Article 14?
In Article 14, to see if the town will readopt the construction property tax exemption for commercial and industrial uses, for the purposes of this exemption in order, so in other words, some businesses will get an exemption.
Yeah, it's not the same thing, and one cannot be in with the other, you can't have both. You can't have one, what you're talking about in Article 14, in with the TIP district, it's either one or the other. So it's just a way to help the town build infrastructure in a district, which would be the TIP district, and to help pay for it.
Mike, Article 13 is the $100,000 to be put into an account for the EMS contract.
Right, okay. I want to go back to the budget just a second, then I'll answer that one, because I've just remembered something. I have been bugging, and Scott can tell you, that's the planning board for the last three or four years about impact fees. The way impact fees is, first of all, it has to be a zoning amendment, which the town will have to vote on. We are pretty much in agreement that we don't want to do it on single-family homes, because we don't want somebody to get an acre of land, they're going to build a nice house, and then all of a sudden have this other huge bill. Basically, it'll be for commercials. And what those impact fees is, you set up accounts in the different departments, the Fire Department, the Police Department, and so on, and when somebody comes in and builds, like the Webb Building, they're taxed, not taxed, but they have a fee on how big their building is. Generally, what I've seen is between a dollar and $2 per square foot. So if you have a 20,000 square foot building, then the fee's going to be about $20,000. These fees can be used up to six years, you have to get rid of them. You have to put them in an interest-bearing accounts, these have to be interest-bearing accounts, and you can only take those fees out when you have an impact, like you need infrastructure or something like that. But it is a way to help us with our infrastructure, with tools that the Fire Department needs, tools that the Police Department needs, without going to the taxpayer.
Okay.
We're going to be talking about Article 13, and basically, that raises $100,000 to be placed in the Expendable Trust Fund for, out of, from the undesignated fund balance, so it's not coming from taxation, right? Because currently, the town contracts with the county to provide EMS.
Right, and right now, that, we got a good deal on that for three years, but it's coming, it's coming now to the end of that contract, and we've been putting money aside so that when it hits, and we have to have a new ambulance service, who are we going to hire? Because you're not going to have the small contracts we've had the last three years, it's going to be significantly higher, and these fees are put aside to help soften that blow. I've heard up to $300,000 a year for this, I'm not sure if that's a good figure or not, but I know it's significantly higher than we've been paying now. And we know when we want an ambulance, or we need an ambulance, we want it. So we've got to have some kind of ambulance service. You don't have a full-time Fire Department, so if you were doing it through the Fire Department, even though we still have our ambulance, you would have a full-time EMS system, and that would be extremely expensive. So this money is being put aside to soften the blow when we go out there and find a new contractor someone, we don't know who it's going to be yet, we're going to have to do a little research on that, it'll soften the blow for your taxes if we have some money already set aside.
So right now, I think the town is going to be, in this budget, is going to be paying about $80,000 for 2025?
Yeah, I think so.
And then, they don't have an exact figure, but somewhere in the area of 350...
Yeah, I thought it was like 330.
330 in 2026, which is significant.
It was over 300, yeah.
So what do you think?
Well, I think we need to do it, I mean, EMS isn't going away.
Right.
You know, we need to have the service, whether it's Treasury EMS, Keane Fire, Rescue Ankle, I don't know that they'll come back after the last negotiations where it didn't go well for them, I understand why the town did it, though, the significant savings for the Treasury EMS to do it, but they did it because they had all the funding, federal funding, to get started in the first place. So now that's going away, which is why the cost is going from the $80,000 to 330 or more. But I think we have to do it, we need to soften the blow.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. We're nearing the end of my, the budget questions here, we're going to get to audience questions. There's two articles by petition, though, that need to be discussed, and the first one is an article that was submitted, are you in favor of increasing the board of selectmen to five members? And I think that's a significant thing that, you know, feel free, anyone, to weigh in, but I'll start with Mark, and then come over to Mike, and...
I guess I'm still up in the air on that, I probably won't know until I actually vote that day, because initially, I signed the petition, because I thought it was a good idea, five people. I know that, you know, Bill Hotwoker wasn't in favor of it, but then he had a committee that had 20 people on it that he set up, and we worked well together, I think. I mean, unfortunately, the committee dwindled quite quickly, down to a few times when we didn't even have enough people for a quorum, but, so I guess I'm, I understand why you want more voices, but then I, as Bill likes to say, then you have to convince two other people, where right now, you only have to convince one, so.
So we say there's advantages and disadvantages.
Yeah, it may drag things longer, where things don't get answered, because you're too busy, nobody wants to agree with each other, so.
How do you feel about it?
Well, I don't like the five, only on the fact that I have seen and been to some of the towns in the area that have five, and at times, it turns into a Donnybrook, where nothing gets accomplished. If you go to the selectmen meetings, like Mark and I have been to most of them in the last couple of years, they'll last anywhere from an hour and a half to two hours. If you have five, I can see those things going till midnight. You know, and let's face it, you know, the select board is a volunteer, and it's just like the rest of the boards here. Now, on the planning board, we sometimes have to go three hours or something, but we're just, by that time, we're done, I mean, you're just wasted. So, no, I would not be in favor of five at all.
Anybody else on the table running have an opinion?
I'm not, I think three have worked fine forever, pretty much, and if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Yep, I'm not in favor of it.
Well, there was a famous president that said, the worst words you can say is, I'm from the government, I'm here to help, so where has more government ever really been better?
Jake?
I'm not going to weigh in on this, this is, this is a, I think it's a, it's an issue which deserves study.
That's a good point. The, anyone else want to talk about that? I'm sure the audience probably will. The last warrant article by petition is Article 16. We, it's, "We, the people of Swansea, petition the town to add a second polling location for all voting, local and federal, at 17 Main Street, Wickham Hall, and to raise an appropriate $15,000 for the additional cost to vote, counting machines, programming, and staffing, with the addition being by next year's election." It's not recommended by the selectmen, and at the deliberative session, one of the supervisors of the checklist indicated that this change would cost more, require more volunteers who already are hard to find, and create logistical issues having additional setup and takedown. So, do you support?
Okay, the article was changed at the deliberative session, though, to make it just a study, so that that article's not even going to be on there.
It's just a study.
You're not going to get your choice of whether you want to do two or not.
Okay, I forgot about that, yeah, good.
It's a study now.
Perfect.
And the study is fine, and we can know what the cost is.
All right. Anybody in the audience that would like to ask the candidates, any of them, a question, if you just go to one of the podiums, give your name and address, they'd like to answer your questions. Don't be bashful. Mike, use the, is that, make sure that...
He's got to turn it on, Mike. Hit the power button.
Push the button down through that fire.
There you go.
Thank you. And I think we used to vote here at Wickham Hall, about 100 years ago, and they didn't have any trouble at all having three polling places in town at the time. And I think it's way overdue that we have a second polling place here at Wickham Hall for the west part of town, and I don't think it would cost any more to have two polling places than it does one.
So the...
We've got two polling machines, all you need is one per polling place. And I can discuss this, and I know we're only going to discuss this at a committee meeting to make a suggestion for next year. So I'm hoping that I can get on the committee to express my opinion, and hope that, you know, people will vote to have the committee and check on having two polling places. That's my wish. And, you know, 100 years ago, if they could do this, I'm sure we can do it today. I thank you very much for letting me stand up and talk about it.
No problem, thanks for... What street do you live on?
You guys want to speak to it? Just before you said, would you want to say?
Oh, we got another person. Hello?
Hi, I'm Barbara Scully, I live on Spring Street, and I just would like to say that we've been experiencing extreme weather events across the nation here in Swansea. Last year, we had people whose wells went dry because of drought. The summer before, we had tremendous washouts. We've had tornadoes that have popped through town and surrounding areas, and a lot of this is, or most of this is considered to be attributable to our use of fossil fuels. So I'd like to ask not only the select board candidates, but also ZBA and planning, if you think that the town of Swansea could take a role, or should take a role, in mitigating these impacts? And what you might suggest we could do.
Well, Barbara, we just approved on the planning board a solar array down by the pollution control plant down there. Okay, so more of those things, yes, I would look favorable on those type of things.
And I don't have any objection, objection approving those types of things like the solar, but I do object to forcing people to do it, to put in ordinance that you have to do this, you have to do that, as far as burning fossil fuel, or whatever you want to do to heat your house. It's up to the individual, to me, if you want to do it, it's fine with me, meets the planning board, then we put it in.
Yeah, I agree with Scott, I think it shouldn't be a mandatory thing. If it's going to save money, it's cost-effective, then I'm all for it. I know that the fire station up in West Milan, they're putting solar on top of their building, so.
And our fire station, if built, is going to be able to support a solar array on the top of that building also. But I agree too, you can't manitate, make it mandatory for people to do it.
I would like to urge whoever gets to be a selectman, the rest of the selectmen, to at least look into the idea of town vehicles and what type of vehicle we have, whether diesel is more efficient or electric is more efficient, whatever. I'm not sure there's a cost-effectiveness there, but I'd like to have at least looked at.
I don't see a big line at the mic, but if you're an elected official, a department head, or anyone that wants to ask these candidates a question...
We have a lot of things that are just...
Okay, I'm sorry. Ms. Deline?
As far as the solar energy projects, I think there's, the planning board has taken this into discussion, and we are not opposed to individuals putting solar panels on their homes or in the backyards, as long as it doesn't interfere with the abutting individuals, meaning you're meeting setbacks, et cetera, like that. But as far as I am concerned, as long as it's done intelligently, I have no problems with it.
Thank you.
The only other issue is whether or not we encourage the installation of electric charging stations for electric vehicles, and I know that's been, you know, came through the planning board, and will keep coming back as it's needed, if the need occurs.
You know, that would be up to the individual, there's no issue there, and also, if a business wants to, like apartment buildings, they want to put in charging for their people, I don't see an issue with it. There's no real zoning on it right now at all.
Selectmen Tim Pesta.
Hi, Jimmy Tim Pesta. I just want to add to, let everybody know, I, this year is probably going to be one of the most challenging years for the select board. As you all know, we lost Sly of nine years, which Sly was very intelligent, did a fantastic job for nine years. Michael Branley, another, big loss, large loss. So that leaves me as the new guy, learning, and it leaves Bill, which I can't compliment him enough on what he does for this town. But what I'm hoping to get out of the select board is another member to come and join our team, and be a team player, and move ahead, because we have large, large challenges in this town. And especially, if that goes through, the water goes through, think about how many challenges we have. I think the five select board is the worst thing that could happen. I think we need three guys working as a team, rolling up their sleeves and going in deep, because this is going to be our most challenging year, and this is what's going to direct Swansea to what street we go down. Because if these don't go through, where do we go now? Where are we going to go with the fire station? What's in it? We going to spend more money and go down another road with this? If the water doesn't go through, how are we going to bring businesses to town? These are the challenges that the select board are going to be putting their lap, and we're going to have to be sitting here when we don't get these votes and come up with a new idea. with a new idea. And if they do go through, we're going to have to sit at the table and figure out how we're going to get this accomplished. So I'm hoping that, good luck to both of you guys, but I hope you guys come aboard and we roll up our sleeves and we go to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody want to ask a question?
Kirsten Kunic. I'm standing up here not really to ask a question, but maybe a point of, of reference. This is the first time I've seen several of these faces, because I'm sitting on this side. I really hate this thing, because it feels like you all are talking to each other and not I. And so I would love it if there would be a table where you would actually be talking to your voters.
Yeah.
Because it's, as a, as a voter, I could, I can't see the names of people who are talking, and not every time that you spoke, did you say your name? So it, it's a little frustrating. So I would love to see a table along, so we can actually see your faces.
Please.
Sounds like a good idea. Anyone else that would like to ask the candidates a question?
I just want to piggyback on that. I have a hard time hearing without seeing the mouths. So again, with just your backs to me, it's, I'm at a loss. Unless you're really loud and slow in the way you're talking, I cannot hear you.
Anyone else with a question for the candidates? Or a complaint?
I'm Roberta Visser. I live on Centerview Drive.
Could you speak up a little bit?
Is the mic been turned off?
I'm Roberta Visser. I live on Centerview Drive. So I wanted to ask about the protection of the aquifers under the airport. I understand over many other areas. Swansea is blessed with pure water, but if the fire station goes in, I'm concerned about the firefighting foam. I've understood over time that it contains PFOAs. How are we going to protect the aquifer? And the second point that I have is, I'd like to know about emergency management for the town. If we do have a major weather event or some other thing, how are people in the town going to be notified of what's going on, what to do, et cetera?
First of all, I don't think the fire department's using foam anymore, so at least I haven't seen it on any of the trucks.
I think there's foam, but it's very, very limited use, you know? And it's not the foam that's causing the, the cancer issues, mate.
And it wouldn't be used at the fire station anyways, even if it was still being used. It would be used at whatever fire there's at, if it was used.
Uh, hang on a second. Chief, you want to just respond to that?
So there's, the, the foams that we have now are all of the newer clean foams. They're not the PFOAs. All of that old stuff has been turned back into the state. We have, like I said, we have all clean foam, and the, the rare chances that we do use it are, are very limited. Sure, sure, I understand that, but like I said, the stuff that they have now has been cleared of all the PFOAs. There's no, there's no nasty chemical-type stuff in it, as far as we've been told. But we were told that back when they made the other foams as well.
And the, the construction of the building is, is designed to filter out impurities before it gets into the sewer system. It, it's, it's a well-designed building in terms of containment on-site and what might happen there, as, as water's used and the trucks are filled and, and, and cleaned and washed and so on, the, the water management on the site is, is going to help protect. But you're right, the, the aquifer is one of our biggest resources in the town, and we need to protect it. Now, there was a second part to your question besides the fire department. Oh, so right now, the emergency management office is in the Town Hall. It's, it's run by the treasurer. If we had an emergency, the, the town treasurer, or tax collector, does the, does the emergency management. There is a, a room in the new fire station that could become an emergency management office if the town decides to move there. It's not a finished room right now in the plans, but it's a, an area where we designated, if the town decides they want to move the emergency management to the fire station, which is maybe a better place for it anyway. It would just mean that, that the materials for that would be located in the fire station instead of the Town Hall, where it is now.
Mike, anything from you on emergency management? Do we still have Code Red? Do we still have Code Red?
Yes, so, yeah.
There's an, an online system, Code Red, that sends out a message across the town? There's a, a Code Red message that gets sent out across the town?
There's a program that you can sign up for as a resident with the emergency management office at Town Hall. They'll take your information and get your phone on a system called Code Red. So if they want to notify you in an emergency, the state emergency management also has that capability. A lot of public safety agencies have the ability to contact you during an emergency. It's pretty standard now. Okay, thank you. Sly, did you have something?
No, no, I was just going to be a reporter. Basically, go to Town Hall, go to Town Hall, stop by, collect records, emergency management and, 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 go in, tell out, or anybody, or, or, and, 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 uh, you, you first, nine, nine, one system, and, 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 but, uh, we didn't, finally, we didn't like, like, uh, your, 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 was in attack or something. Just some people on that, that were, were, and, because everybody, everybody got their damn hands pretty rough. We had to go to someone like this, so you get an assault on them, maybe they're attacked, and, you know, all that, or, or, and, I don't know, we got down, I had, you know, they called, uh, there's a lot of, um, Wickham Hall, and, 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 uh...
You have to register with Kevin, I think. Yeah.
Are you waiting to get to the mic? Yeah, go right ahead, please.
So, I want to have a, a question or complaint, like a compliment. I want to thank you for organizing this. I think this is a really important function, and I haven't met some of you before, so I'm interested in what you have to say. Just, I do have one question. Were there three selecting candidates?
There, there was, the third candidate was not able to attend.
I'm kind of disappointed, but, uh, thank you very much.
I'll just introduce you to my colleague, Eileen Launch, who was the president of SPS, and she's really the organizer of this. She's the one that wanted the roundtable.
Mike Thiemy, he's Swansea. I just had a question about the West Swansea Water System. I know, Scott, you said that you thought the infrastructure was in really good shape. My question is, is, is it sized well enough to allow for future expansion?
And you're talking about the size of the pipe?
Yeah.
I understand, right?
Yeah.
Because the wells are, are pretty well sized for that. The size of the pipe is eight inch, and it's cement transite pipe, which has asbestos in it, which isn't a problem unless asbestos is in the air. And that, again, that's eight inch pipe, which is sized well enough all the way down. It had to be sized at large to accommodate the mill, which is what the water system was for in the first place.
Right. Right. So is all, is all of that piping all original?
It is, yeah. It's all, from the wells down to the mill, it's all original. It's been extended down to the, it used to be FM Label, now it's Mold Pro down there, back when it was built there, and then it extended from there. It goes down to Riverbend and Evergreen Knoll down there as well. It supplies us to...
Yeah, that's as far as it goes?
Yeah, it goes, that's as far as it goes there, and that's the only place it crosses. Route 10 is West Street, yeah, is it West Street? Yeah, West Street, where it crosses Route 10. And again, anytime we've drilled into those pipes, there's nothing on the inside of those pipes, it's like they're brand new.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening. Rich Bryant from Swansea. My question is, we had a reevaluation here that hit an awful lot of seniors hard. I hear so many people up here saying, "We're going to try to draw business." I keep hearing this for seven years. What are we going to do, especially with an elderly population? We can't go to our boss for a raise, and we're asking for more and more every year. Sooner or later, we got to look at taxes and different things, and I don't hear anybody saying much about how we're going to control taxes. It's great to spend, but you know, you're going to run seniors that aren't asking for a lot of things out of town, and then you're going to get families with kids in here. So all I'm asking is, think about the seniors that are on limited budgets, and let's put it in proper perspective, because every evaluation, even myself, over $900 increase in six months. It was a hell of a Christmas gift, and I don't think it was deserved, because we had an inflated, because of COVID, with property values, and we were going to see them crash, I believe. But that's my point. I hope you just think about seniors that are on limited budgets when you keep saying, "Let's keep spending." Thank you.
Well, I look in the mirror every day, and I see a senior, so I feel your pain. Like, like you, all of us have felt that pain, and it all came down to the hot real estate market that we had. Houses got reevaluated. Now you can't paint a house around for less than $300,000, $400,000, and that's what caused all of that. The best we can do for the seniors and everybody else in town is to control our costs the best we can and try to get more business in here to get a stronger and wider tax base.
It's the schools.
Well, the schools, the schools, you know, you go to the school deliberative session, or I go to these other ones, and I don't see a lot of Swansea people there. I saw a lot of Richmond people at the deliberative session, but you don't see any of the schools. The biggest cost there, when they have, like, they're going to have either $36 million for a budget or going to have $38 million for a budget, it just depends on how the people vote. What it's going to cost, they're going to have to cut some things, but what bothers me the most about that is they cut programs and they cut teachers before they cut the administrative staffs and the SAUs. That's not right. Why cut a teacher if you could do away with one less secretary? The teachers need to stay, as, as far as I'm concerned, when they're good. But right now, we are down the middle of the pack in the world with a number, we, we spend more money per person, per pupil than the other country in the world, but yet our results are horrible.
Linda Faulkner. I live in West Swansea. I'm a supervisor of the checklist. I'm a little disappointed in the voting guide, because it says it's not too late to register to vote, and you need to bring a valid ID. As of November 11th last year, you have to prove citizenship. You have to show us a birth certificate or a passport or naturalization papers. So if anybody knows of anybody that's going to come in to register to vote on, on March 11th, please tell them to bring their birth certificate or a passport or naturalization papers. Otherwise, they can't vote. There's no more affidavits to sign that says, "Yes, I'm a citizen."
Sly, I know you spoke just a minute ago. Any parting thoughts you'd like to offer?
No, I think we, we, it's not that you're wrong, especially your runway, or anything. It's not like we're, we're, Jimmy's been, uh, uh, fresh here. We have worked all together, and everything, my name, not my name, you know, we didn't really come up with any activities, you know, we wanted one of this, we wanted one of that. We had to get the checklists, basically, from the infrastructure, uh, facilities, that had been looking at all kinds of facilities, everything, things, bridges, uh, obviously the town, and we kind of checked them all, as we did, and even crazy stuff like, you know, that kind of came out of the ordinary, you know, and, 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 and,